Uh, tab C, Richard.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, June fourteenth. President this evening, we have David Durgan, member, Richard Clark, member, Thomas Chmack, he's not here yet, Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, myself, Kai Horn, and our Town Planner, William Scanlon. First item on our agenda is Pleasure Leagance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Flag Day, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could we check with the videographer to see if we are recording this evening?
Okay.
There's been some issues with some recordings not being recorded of late.
All right. So next, we have approval of minutes from May twenty-second, that would have been the town meeting, and May twenty-fourth.
Kayden didn't get to the minutes for the twenty-fourth, but you do have the minutes for the twenty-second.
Okay.
Which was just the, um, the quick meeting we had before town meeting.
Right.
I've got two originals, so.
Oh, I've got one here.
To sign.
Oh, yeah, two are.
Should I make some kind of a statement about my status for the evening, or?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
So yes, Mr. Chairman, for the board, for the order here is, after election, I did not get sworn in yet, so as my understanding is, tonight, I am not a voting member, I can only participate.
Yep, you're an elected member, but not.
Exactly.
Not sworn in yet.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Dudley Planning Board meeting minutes for May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'd have to abstain, so you guys are the only two that voted on that one.
You weren't there?
Remember, I showed up late.
Okay. All right, so I'll second it, but we can't.
Well, I have two votes.
Yeah, we're not gonna have enough.
All right, we'll have to table that till next week.
We'll have to wait on that one, Bill.
I'm causing trouble already.
Give that one back to Bill, so we can hold on to it till next week.
All right, that's in advance.
Sorry about that. Go back here, it takes care of the minutes, we have no A and R plans, and we have a public hearing continuation coming up at seven fifteen, but we're not there yet, so we'll need to fill some time. Let's jump down to the standard business, number one. Is that a good, is that a good place to start, Bill, or do you have another place that we should start to fill fifteen minutes?
That's fine.
Okay. Number one, under standard business, we have discussion status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, and Lion Estates. So I think on Pierpon Estates, we have a request for an extension to the covenant?
So in tab D, we have a couple of things. The first item you'll see is the termination agreement of the surety that Pierpon Estates has with Hill Financial. You had seen this form before and approved it as to form, awaiting signatures from the applicant, which you can see are now on the form, and they did supply a check of forty-six thousand, seven hundred, seventy-one dollars and twenty cents to replace the exact amount that was being withheld in the security, the intent being to put all of the securities for this project in one account in cash with the town.
Okay.
So I would ask you to move to sign this form to make it official, and then I will return a copy.
One copy, Bill?
Yes.
We need a motion.
We do need a, we do need a motion.
Uh, I think another motion would be appropriate.
Yeah.
To sign.
Do you want to handle that, Mr. Clark?
All right, well, Chairman, I would move that we agree to the terms stipulated for the termination of lender's agreement for surety witnessed on June two thousand twenty-three, I don't see a specific date.
Well, entered as today.
Yesterday.
As today.
Yesterday, well, it'll be the thirteenth.
No, it'll, it'll be entered as today.
It'll be the fourteenth, the fourteen, with Hill Financial Services and Depot, Rochelle, and L L C.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be three yes and one abstention from Mr. Edmiston.
Thank you. The second item is to extend the covenant. We had extended it two years ago to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, and so I've written this to extend it another two years to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. It's my understanding that the project will be done by then, so hopefully this will be the last time.
Extend it.
We have to do this.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion for the extension of the covenant for, what is this, Pierpon Estates?
Yes.
Question, Mr. Chairman, to the planner, at two thousand twenty-five, another two years, I thought from what I remember hearing discussed and sounded like this is very close to completion at this point, would one year be sufficient?
It could be, they could get it done, they have to go through the process of getting the street accepted by town meeting, and oftentimes, that takes a while to finish up all the loose ends.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we agree to the extension or modification of Pierpon Estates' definitive subdivision plan covenant, new expiration date being June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, it would be three with one extension.
Oh, here we go.
Is that it, it for that section?
Uh, there's one more, I wasn't sure whether this was necessary, but I did it anyway, you'd already, approved the covenant extension, I did another form, which is what we typically do to extend an approval period.
So, this completion extension request form?
Yes.
Okay.
For which one?
It's for Pierpon Estates, the same thing.
In the same tab, right.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion that we also approve the completion slash extension request form for Pierpon Estates until the, extend it to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the completion slash extension request form for Pierpon Estates, dated June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, extending the time of completion to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Again, three to one, abstention.
So this is the form that I'll sign.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. So going back to that section on the agenda, do we have any other things with any of the other ones that are on the list here?
We have, um, the extension for Country Club Acres. I had spoken with Mr. Haynes, who said he would be here this evening.
Okay.
I don't see him here at the moment. You had asked me to invite him to the meeting so you could discuss what's been going on at that project, or he agreed to come, so maybe we could postpone that for now.
Yeah, and I think since we asked, we asked to have him come in, citing a bunch of, I guess, questionable things going on at the subdivision, I think the town highway commissioner's been out to check the, to check the subdivision and has found a lot of the things that we were questioning to be now in line where they need to be or where they should be. So, but if he's supposed to come in, I think we should just wait and have a chat with him.
Sure.
Okay. All right, let's see what else we've got, we've still got about five minutes to fill. So under number two, section two inspections and actions associated with site plans, we had Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, we just spoke about, we're gonna wait, S E P Solar, J D and D, twenty-four Oxford Road, anything on this?
Just to pack up a bit.
Yep.
We haven't had a discussion on Rocky Hill Estates for quite some time.
Okay.
I was wondering if, I know a couple of years ago, we invited them in, they came to a meeting and spoke about the project, wonder if it'd be appropriate to touch base with them again and see what the status is with that project.
Send them a letter, do we know how many lots are left?
Hardly any, maybe one or two, I think, on the recent cul-de-sac that they had.
I think there's like one lot left.
Lot left?
Yeah, someone, someone bought a bunch of them, or illegally bought a bunch of them, so there's three lots that aren't theirs, on my, on my road, Eagle Drive, and then there's like maybe three on the Bonnet Road, but they're not part of the covenant, they're all A and R plans.
Bonnet Road's different.
Excuse me?
Bonnet Road's different.
Yeah, Bonnet. It seemed to me it's ready to be accepted, you know, it's been done for some time, maybe we could request that they, you know, move forward on the street acceptance process for that subdivision, ramp it up.
Yeah, you want, want to send them a letter?
What is your suggestion?
Say, send them a letter, and if they can provide us with a status of where they are, that's great, if they can't, then I think we'll have to send consultant town engineer out to take a look and see where, where everything is. I mean, they, they should have, what is it, the Form H or Form, yeah, Form H that.
Right.
They should have a Form H that's up to some kind of date, or has been last used, and then we can take a look at that and see where they are.
We were holding quite a bit of cash in that subdivision, so I'm not concerned about, you know, being stuck with a bill we can't pay for, but I think it would just be, you know, time to move it forward to completion.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I can't, I can remember when they re-ground part of it, part of Eagle Drive and repaved it, but it's been, I would say it's been over ten years.
Actually, they ground the whole entire thing and repaved it.
Terms of Tobin Farm, you know, town meeting did approve the betterment program, we're waiting for Graves Engineering to prepare the bid specification for that project, and we'll put it out to bid, hope to get the work done over the summer and try to bring it to town meeting for acceptance in the fall.
Now that, so if I understood right, the last town meeting, Patrick Hill Road was accepted? So do we now, do we now know, could we make it public, what, what the actual cost for public, for Patrick Hill Road was, as opposed to what we had quoted it at?
Yes, we do have the known cost for that project.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, it was about seventy-six, seventy-seven thousand dollars, out of what town meeting had approved, a hundred and five thousand or so, so it came in well under budget.
About twenty-five percent less.
It will be, that project will be, the betterment will be committed to the tax bills before January first, and then it'll show up on next year's tax bills, so not, not this July one, but the following July one. And we are in the process of working with town council to actually acquire the right of way to make it a public way. So that's not completed yet, but it's well on its way to, to being wrapped up.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I was going back to the email with all the handouts, I think there was an extension for Lion Estates as well, was it there?
Yes, Tom Rovain said he would be away this week, and asked if he could come next week, and I, I mean, next meeting, and I said yes.
Yeah, 'til the end of the month.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. We are at seven fifteen, so I think we should reopen the public hearing for a modification of a previously approved site plan at thirty-five to thirty-seven Chase Avenue. Do we have to reread the public announcement?
No, no.
No, okay. Do you know if they're gonna be here tonight?
I didn't hear from them, I just, they didn't ask for an extension or, you know, to move the meeting, so I assumed they would be here.
Okay, but there are, there is a water and sewer meeting going on, so they may be there?
Could be.
Somebody wanna check and see if they're there, or? What's Rob is gonna check first?
So.
I thought Water and Sewer just sent the letter, they're gonna pull stuff.
So, on, um.
They basically voted on the report, right, they accepted the report?
Yeah.
So in tab C, we have some, some things on that project, since the hearing is open, we can discuss them. So today, at three fifty-nine P M, I got a email from the fire department regarding the fire safety issue at the mill, and I'll, I'll just read it because it's only a paragraph. Bill, not sure if the chief has addressed this email or not, but the Dudley Fire Department has been onsite to discuss the fire hydrant locations, and after viewing the site, along with the building owner, owner reps, the fire department is in agreement with the two hydrants and locations at the rear of the building. The locations will help facilitate a fire department tie into the building, into the building sprinklu system, and add needed water for suppression efforts on that side of the building. Dudley Fire will accept a number and locations of proposed fire hydrants. On the next page, we have a email from Jen Canoy of the Water and Sewer Department regarding the decision of the Water and Sewer Commission accepting the peer review report prepared by Tyon Bond, and this, this email says, attached is the peer review from Tyon Bond regarding the water sewer infrastructure. The Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners meeting last night, the board voted unanimously to follow the recommendations of the peer review. Now, the peer review is the next item in your packet. If you turn to page, page three, the, at the bottom of page three, are the recommendations of the review. Following should be considered for the proposed project, replacing the existing Chase Avenue water main due to its existing condition and poor capability to isolate, meaning that there's only one shut-off valve for that entire street, and if you look on the opposite page, you can see that the water main they're talking about runs from Schofield Avenue up to a little bit past the mill, and that's the issue that the Water and Sewer Commissioners are very concerned about, is being old and prone to breakage, so they feel that that main should be replaced. They would also like, under number two, extending the Chase Avenue water main north to connect to Brandon Road and Daniel Street. This extension, also called looping, will provide some redundancy and reliability to service the proposed development. It can help dissipate pressure surges within the distribution system, which can be particularly damaging at dead ends, it would also allow for an additional way to get water to the proposed development if there was a water main break on the southern end of Chase Avenue water main. You can see, they would like to extend that main a little bit up to Brandon Road and then further up to Daniels, in order to provide looping capability. And then, third, and the water meter issue is to confirm the existing water meter for the site is the current town standard, not aged out, has any required backflow devices, and is an adequate size for existing proposed flow conditions to ensure all flow through the meter is properly registered, and confirm that there are working isolation valves on either side of the water meter, so that when the water meter needs to be replaced, other than, other water customers are not shut down for water service. So those are the main recommendations of the report. The, as you know, the planning board approved the special permit for this project, which allowed for retail, manufacturing, and cultivation. They came in for a modification of the site plan, a couple of us walked the site with the engineer to get a handle on what those modifications were. They include adding a water main around the back of the building for fire protection and doing some new utility pads, so they're really not changing the site that much to accommodate the manufacturing component, and they decided to postpone the, the cultivation component for later day. And their contention is that the manufacturing piece will not add significantly to the water demand that they currently are taking with just the, the retail use on the property. So the question is, for the planning board, you know, what, you know, how you wanna handle the Water and Sewer Commissioners' request, my thought is that I think we need some further discussion with them in order to identify what exactly is required of the applicant in order to have his project move forward. It would cost a significant amount of money to replace that water main, which is a tremendous burden on the, on the applicant, and so the question is whether that's really required as part of the modification of the site plan.
So there's new water mains going on their property, all the way to our pumping station?
No, it's tying into the town water main on, on Chase F.
Yep, and they got a return here in eighteen inch, by the looks of it, right?
Sewer, maybe?
That's out of, of the sewer, okay.
Yeah, that's not a water, it's not part of the water main project, not part of the project. There could be a water main going down.
Where does it end right now? Is that like a, a fire hydrant right there, where it ends, on Chase F?
Yes, that symbol, that sort of plus symbol is a fire hydrant. And then, as you just heard from the water, from, excuse me, from the fire department, they've worked with the applicant to design the, the water service on the property to add a couple of new hydrants in the event of a fire.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the planner, as I read this email from Water and Sewer, Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners meeting last night, the board voting unanimously to follow the recommendations of the peer review, are we in a position to second guess their decision to approve or to abide by or to indicate that the identified considerations and improvements and recommendations be implemented?
Well, they're an elected board, and they have jurisdiction over the water and sewer systems.
Right.
So, I think.
I see a clearer line between them and Water and Sewer than I do, and this board's a connection to that part of the business.
There's still one more looking at, it's not our purview.
Yeah. That's not our purview, bringing that water up to Brandon Road and making them do that.
So my thought is, you know, I don't quite understand why the applicant has to make improvements to the town system. The water superintendent estimates about six hundred thousand dollars for that work to replace the water main in Chase Avenue, seems like an unnecessary burden on the applicant to have to pay for that in order to go ahead for something that the planning board has already approved. So I guess I'd just like to have some further discussions with that commission to get a sense of what's a reasonable request. If they're gonna hold fast to, to implementing that entire program, then I don't think the planning board can really dispute that.
So, but I think they need to have like some kind of business plan put together where, you know, is it gonna be a, is it gonna be a one-year project, a two-year project, a three-year project, I mean, 'cause I think it's, it's a lot to ask for somebody to do that in the one-year time span or something like that, so, yeah, I mean, I think it just needs to be, I think the, the details need to be worked out between the applicant and the, and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and then once they kind of have an agreement, then they can present it to us, and we can make it a condition of the, of their, of their site plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it may be possible, I mean, obviously, we approved this at some point in time, I can't remember back, and I haven't looked at the meeting minutes, did we approve this with any kind of input from the Water and Sewer Commission? Did we get accurate information from the applicant at that point in time about their water demands and what they were using? So I think there's a lot of questions that come up here that maybe, information that we didn't have whenever we approved this a year ago or a year and a half or whatever. I see, I see potential issues here, I mean, I don't, the fire loop, fire protection loop around the building isn't being shown, how much is that gonna suck down in a case of fire? If there is no connection, if this isn't a loop, or this is just a dead-end position here, will, would something that happens to the Chase F site negatively impact any of those houses there? What if there is a fire, and we can't put it out because we don't have any water pressure there? I see there's a lot of issues here that happen to do with, be with public safety, and, you know, it's unfortunate that infrastructure isn't in good shape, but that doesn't mean that when the applicant is going to put in, or not put in a new building, but added a new use for the building and change the demand, then they either have to do their homework first and find out if the utilities will support that, and if they haven't done their homework, then it's up to them to be standing upright for it. So I do see some good sense here behind what the Water and Sewer Commissioner are doing, and I also agree that this probably isn't our purview, but.
Yep. I mean, it's, I hate to say it in this, in this frame, but it's kinda like when you buy an old house and you start remodeling it, you think it's a thirty thousand dollar job, and when you're done, it's a sixty thousand dollar job, because a lot of things you didn't count on happening happen. So, I mean, they got an old mill in an old part of town, yeah.
Well, if you will, Mr. Chairman, when this was first presented to us, the idea was it was gonna be retail, grow, and it was gonna be processing, I mean, this was gonna be a much more extensive project in terms of one fully implemented, it was gonna be, you know, soup to nuts from beginning to end from far as product goes. What they've done is effectively scaled this back, and they've eliminated the grow aspect of it, so, if any, they actually, their demand for water has decreased over time as opposed to what it initially had been, and I know that they've, they've gone around numerous times with the Water and Sewer Commission with regards to what the estimates were and how valid they were, and who had the best numbers and where they were coming from, that was a bone of contention, as I recall, in some of those meetings. This looks like it should be more easily accepted in the fact that the demand for water is considerably less than it would have been as originally presented.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
That, that's not, you know, that's not to ignore the fact that there are certain deficiencies, and I think Water and Sewer would acknowledge that those deficiencies existed long before these guys ever came to Dudley.
To, to wait a minute, I'll try to shut up. My opinion is that this keeps on changing every time they come before us, they want the world, they wanna scale it back. Last time they were here, it seemed like they were peace feeling everything, trying to go for a little bit of approval, get a little bit more of approval, get a little bit more of approval, and every time, building on that form of approval of what's going on. I think that we have to take the whole picture, they were talking about cultivation, I'm not a hundred percent sure about this, but I remember, or I think I remember a comment when we were going through the original approval about if they need water, if there's water problems, they'll truck water in.
Yep.
And now they wanna get into our, to the water system and put strains on it, and have the town repairs to make it compatible with their use, I've just not seen the sense behind this.
And the fact that we don't have anybody here to explain either side tonight, whether it's the, the Water and Sewer Department or the applicant, can we just postpone this into our next meeting?
That would be my suggestion, is that we see if the applicant can develop some kind of a program, perhaps as Dan suggested, with the Water and Sewer Commission, to, you know, make certain improvements, maybe face it over time or whatever.
Right, and can we, can we invite, you know, the Water and Sewer Commissioners to come to the next meeting, and, you know, if they have an agreement in place, great, they can explain it to us, if they don't, then, you know, maybe they can explain to us the reasoning behind all this tied-in-bond work that they did on the, on the current, you know, Water and Sewer situation there, the peer review, and they can explain that to us and why it's, you know, why it's important, so, I mean, like, you know, being both elected boards, one board can't tell another board what to do, but obviously, we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot here, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do something that's gonna negatively impact the town, so we wanna make sure we, we're all in agreement and we're all in line, so, that's my, that's my thought.
Water and sewage gives them whatever, then what we do, A C, A C units, and that'll be what we'd be holding on, right?
The pads.
The pads, and that would be it, and then everything else will be on water and sewage.
That's correct, right, you're only.
Right, but I think if, if, if it's, if the Water and Sewer Agreement is gonna be part of the site plan conditions, we would need to add that into our. Right, but I think if, if, if it's, if the water and sewer agreement is going to be part of the site plan conditions, we would need to add that into our site plan conditions. We would add it in, if they can come to an agreement between, between the applicant and the Water and Sewer Department, right? Bill, I think we would want to tie it that way so that we have some, we have some legality to it, so that they're under agreement that they're going to do this, you know, if it's a two-year plan or a three-year plan or whatever it is.
I mean, it doesn't make sense if the planning board approves it, but the Water and Sewer Commission doesn't, and then they can't go forward anyway. I think we should have a unified agreement as to how to handle the whole project.
Right, and make it all, make it all part of the site plan. Yeah, okay. Sounds like we're in agreement, so we'll postpone this, yeah. Do we need a motion to postpone it?
Continue, correct.
To continue it, sorry, not postpone. Would somebody like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Chase Ave, number thirty-five to thirty-seven Chase Ave, modifications of a previously approved site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we continue the public hearing for modification of the approved, previously approved site plan for thirty-five, thirty-seven Chase Ave until our next meeting.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Should we, I think we have the public hearing on the definitive plan at seven fifteen. So what time would you like to schedule this for?
Seven forty-five?
Okay.
Seven forty-five, that's good.
Do we need that in the motion then?
Yes, that's our.
Seven forty-five.
So we have a motion for the continuation to be at seven forty-five, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's four and one abstention. Okay. So that takes us up to standard business. Anything on Stevens Mill?
I talked to Mr. Comfort, who's still very enthusiastic about the project. He is still working with the National Park Service, who has to approve the plans because the building's on the national register. And so he said they've been kind of difficult to work with. Their purview is to retain the historic character of the building and his purview is to get the project moving, you know, as efficiently as possible. So, they're negotiating still, he thought that they were close and then he would try to get the, the project underway late summer. There's also apparently a falcon nesting in the, in the building and they have to wait for the fledglings to, to leave before they can work on that section of the building. So that's another reason why it's been slow to get moving. But he's, he's still optimistic that the project will go forward.
Mr. Chairman, I've spoken to Mr. Waddle, I think is the gentleman's name in the past, and I urge them to put up something and we have a sign to let people know that this thing is still active and alive. Because as you drive by there, you could very easily assume that it's a dead letter and nothing's happening and nothing is planned or going to happen. I don't know where they stand on that, but, you know, one of those coming soon or something to that effect, or, you know, get your deposits down now for, you know, wonderful apartments that will be here next to the falcon nest in the future. You know, that kind of thing, I, I think it would allay some of the concerns that people have in terms of whether this thing is still an active issue or whether it's become a dead letter.
I'll make that suggestion.
You know, it doesn't have to be a big neon thing, just crank something out.
Okay, Bill, anything on the decision for the Nichols College Townhome Project?
No, they're still negotiating with the landowner, Ninety-Ninth Center Road.
Mr. Chairman, again, let me interrupt you, I apologize, but I think I saw somewhere in the Worcester Telegraph recently that Nichols had acquired additional property in town. I know Mr. Wettrow was in the audience and he watches real estate transactions pretty religiously. Would that have been the case or did I misread something?
I didn't see it, they go through the MLS, but that doesn't mean that they, it could be a situation where it was a transaction outside of the normal channels.
Okay, I guess if, in fact, that was the case, that was another property taken off the tax rolls.
They purchased a piece of, a tract of land on the west side of Hall Road.
Okay.
About six and a half to seven acres only.
They did, all right, so again, that's no longer taxable.
Right.
Is asking to take US?
No, I mean, it's a good, good business for them, I suppose, but.
It's across, it's across the Center Road from where this project is being built, so it's on the other side.
Okay.
By their field over there.
By the field, yeah, and the Grand Trumpf and all that.
All right. Interesting.
Maybe they're moving their townhouses.
The sign is still up there, the townhouse, at least as of last week, and nothing has happened, and I could tell, anyway. But I just note that, you know, the tax situation of the town is a very sensitive issue right now. And it's a little bit less of an issue as a result of that, and this pending Ninety-Ninth Center Road, if you will, if that comes to fruition.
Okay, next item, planner's plate, anything from you, Bill?
Two things, the town received a grant for the rail trail.
Great, oh, good.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
Significant money.
That's a, that's a really big rail trail.
I know, so that's to pave the trail.
Okay.
For the full life in Dudley.
Wow, wow.
So we just got word.
Do you know how wide they would pave it, four feet, five feet wide?
It's about ten.
Really?
Ten feet wide, I think, yeah.
Old trail.
That's almost like a superhighway.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Both, both the one from Schofield down to the Connecticut Line and then the one from Connecticut Line up to the Southridge Line, so the whole, the whole stretch.
That's great.
So unfortunately, the loop in Connecticut is still rough, but, so people won't be able to do the whole trail, but at least they can do various, both portions.
Have a mountain bike, you'd be knowing the problem.
Well, the dog walks me through that end of it, now Mill Road, I think it's coming off of, and that, that's not all that bad in terms of the condition there. And there are, I've seen any number of bikers out there.
Well, the advantage is they'll make it handicap accessible, which would be a big deal for people in wheelchairs to have a long trail like that to use.
Great.
That's cool.
Any other good news?
Yeah.
Only good news.
The First Avenue project, we have the pre-construction meeting on Friday. That's to put in a new water main in First Ave. And that is, it's about eight hundred feet of new water main, new curbing sidewalks. Not a full width paving in this phase, but we've applied for another phase. And we just submitted that application in the Community Development Block Grant.
Okay.
But the water main project should get underway in a week or two. And the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission wrote that grant and is administering it. Time Bond is the engineer on the project. And the low bid was something on the order of four hundred thousand dollars, something like that, so.
And this is on First Ave?
Pardon?
First Ave?
Yes.
So just George Street to Big House?
What's that?
George Street to Brandon Road, I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah. And the other side they started working on already, so.
So it'll tie into that project, so that'd be a complete connection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a general question so I can get enlightened, who, let's see, instigated, who, for the grant for the rail trail paving, which department?
I was.
I was?
Yes.
Good job, Bill.
Thank you. Ken Butkowitz had done a tremendous job on that project, but when he passed away, you know, nobody picked it up. And it just seemed to me that it's a, it's a great project and it was just a matter of pulling together information that he had, getting an estimate and putting the application together, so.
So was that a federal grant or was that a state grant?
It's the Mass Trail, so it's a state program.
Okay, good, great.
Yeah, Ken did an awful lot for the rail trail.
Yeah.
He was probably the only person that was really, he was a one-man committee for a long time, wasn't he?
He was, yeah, he did a great job.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
So next we have comments from the planning board.
Welcome back.
I'm older than ever.
I would have one comment, or maybe it's a question and a comment. Walking, driving by the golf course recently, I noticed a couple of folks that seem to ignore the fact that there's a stop sign there, which is nothing new, obviously. But it seems to me that with a bucket of paint and a brush, somebody could put stop at the end of that parking lot, just paint it on there. And I've seen that on other parking lots, and maybe arrows indicating right or left instead of just buzzing right through the whole thing. I don't think that's really rocket science and I, I think it'd be a minimal cost, obviously it's not a solution, but it might be a Band-Aid, if you will. So, this would be the parking lot coming out of the golf course on Airport Road.
So.
Just to get those folks exiting the parking lot to actually stop before they did so. And to maybe direct the traffic as they're coming out of the parking lot, either to the right or the left, as opposed to going through the intersection full tilt.
Maybe we could ask Jeff Murray, I'm sure he has the templates to do that.
So, the, that project, that area has been submitted as a shared streets and spaces program. The town got a grant for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or so. Part of that grant is to align that intersection. So the Dudley Hill Road would come up opposite the golf course driveway. And that driveway would be narrowed and there would be pedestrian crossings there.
I, I am aware that, you know, that there is a better solution and hopefully that will be implemented, but that's not a short-term solution.
So you want something done?
I, I'm thinking a can of paint, I mean, it could be tomorrow. That's not going to take a whole lot of effort, Nichols College has all sorts of folks who work at facilities. Probably have a light workload this time of year because most of the kids aren't doing damage to dorms right now.
And like I said, maybe Jeff Murray could lend them the templates to do the stop line or the, or the stop sign. When do you think that that, that, that work for that grant would come to fruition? Is that something this year, next year?
So, the project is under design.
Okay.
If I may, way back when, I think our next target, our initial target was the Ramshorn Road and Dudley Oxford Road. And then obviously, as I think Mr. Wettrow was kind enough to bring us back a bit in terms of some of the history, we went with Mason Road because of water and sewer, we had a covered project. And the convenience of doing that, so we delayed on the Ramshorn Road, but where is that one in terms of the process?
That's a different, that's a different grant program.
Different grant program?
Yeah.
Okay, and that one, we made it to the schools?
That's a bigger project. The shared streets and spaces program had a maximum of two hundred thousand and the Ramshorn Road project would be well north of that.
All right, which of them is complete streets then?
That, so that would be the Ramshorn Road area would be a complete streets project.
All right.
Where you can get up to five hundred thousand.
Anyone need all of that, probably?
Probably. So to answer your question, I think the shared streets would be designed this year, probably work would take place next year.
Next year, okay.
That also includes dead-ending tanyard road.
Which was closed off today.
Which will be closed, oh, was it today?
Yeah, for some sort of a project, I'm not sure what.
Oh, okay. So it'll be a cul-de-sac put at the end of tanyard, so that would no longer continue straight through to Airport slash Dudley Hill. And make it a much safer intersection.
One, one less entrance into the intersection, correct. Okay. But, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Clark, if, if they could do something this, this summer to help alleviate the traffic until, until the master plane comes out next year and they.
So that, as you know, that golf course is owned by Nichols College. So, we only have jurisdiction within the town right of way.
But we could ask them if they, if they would be willing to put a stop line.
Striping or have, allow the highway department to do something, but maybe we could work something out with them.
Or even if their facility guys did it, if, you know, it was an approved template, I don't care, I don't, I don't think anybody cares.
Right, but we can't do it without their permission if.
They've been very busy, that parking lot is very active lately, I don't, they have new signage out there, we serve food or we have food. I think they're doing a much better job of promoting it than they had in the past, so. The good thing is for them, better business, but the concerning thing is obviously the traffic and.
How is the pub idea working out?
For them?
Yes.
I would assume it's doing pretty well, I don't know, if that's the nineteenth hole.
Haven't been any, any issues that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, again, the only thing I've noticed, and it's not that hard to see, is people who see themselves close to the golf course and there's a stop sign there and they figure, why bother? I'm just going into the golf course parking lot, so, go ahead.
Any other comments from the planning board?
I found a guy to do that marijuana overlay district, that hemp farmer out over on Center Road. He seemed like he'd be interested, but he'd have to change the requirements, I think it was like ten acres or something you guys had.
Oh, okay.
So, he's got like eight point nine acres.
He hasn't contacted me, do you think he wants to?
Yeah, I reached out to him and asked him if he would be interested, he said he'd be interested, so. Successful hemp farmer. Be a good thing to try out, see what he wants, see what his, you know, plan is.
Well, he should come to the planning board then and talk about the, the project and see if the board wants to.
I mean, the problem, we were, we were looking at that overlay district before was like, we were looking for farms that had like thirty acres of land and they were only going to use one acre of land, you know? Because of the proximity to other, other houses and.
Yeah, I thought it stalled out because we needed an actual person to have, to be part of the overlay district before we created it, right?
Correct.
Do we even have to have an overlay district?
The girl weed. Just change, well, attempt to change by laws, the town people will vote on it again.
That project on Corbin Road, or that farm on Corbin Road where that was proposed, was a big farm and it was sparsely populated. But still there was opposition from some of the surrounding.
Right, and they were only, they were only proposing a one acre, a one acre field in the middle of, what, fifty acres on that farm?
Yeah.
Fifty acres plus, I think.
They failed it, maybe, as I recall.
So, I think.
I thought they, yeah, I thought that they withdrew.
Yeah, we passed over that.
They withdrew, well.
They did, yeah.
Because of neighbors, you know, like, yeah.
It's going to be the same smell, you know, where they grow in hemp or cannabis. Be able to regulate it a little bit better with the CCC.
Yeah, hemp is regulated by the Department of Agriculture, but.
And they don't have a limit on to the number of, they don't have a small.
You need to prove it from DAR to do it, but it's not limited at local level.
Yeah, it's not limited to one acre, if you have eight acres of land, you could grow five acres of it, right?
Yes.
He said he grew like thirteen, because he's got two separate lots, so he said he grew a lot, built up his, his farm, he was saying.
Right.
I think you can email me that, that old one that we have, I'll go through it and try to make my adjustments if we order in the next meeting.
Any other comments from the planning board? Okay, seeing none, comments from the audience, our audience just went up.
We had a question for Scott, remember?
You have questions?
Do you have, do you have DNA, you guys doing your DNA thing?
If you want to come up to the microphone, we can tell you what we're, what we're planning for the next meeting.
Oh, okay, for your next meeting, good, okay.
Yeah, so we basically continued the Chase Mill project. The modification to a previously approved site plan at Chase Avenue. We basically continued it till the next meeting and we were hoping that by that next meeting, you and the applicant will have an agreement worked out.
Mr. Chairman, I think for the record, the gentleman needs to identify himself.
Yeah, if you would.
Okay, I'm Scott Zikowski, current chair of the Water and Sewer Commission, resident of Eight Catherine Street.
So, yeah, like I was saying, we've continued it till the next meeting and we were hoping that by next meeting, you, your, your board and the applicant would have some kind of agreement worked out on what your engineer has proposed.
Okay, we sent that back, I mean, I believe it's, I mean, if they want to talk to us, we haven't reached out to them, we don't know. That's part of the whole site plan.
We looked at Jeff Faulkner's report.
Right.
Got the email from Jen saying that you supported the report.
That's correct. The report found all of our, all of our concerns were, were confirmed by the report.
So, the question before the, so the planning board wants to make sure that the two elected boards work together and have a common process for moving forward. So, we were wondering whether the applicant is required or should be required to replace that main in Chase Avenue, which is an existing town water main.
Right.
Which is old and prone to breakage.
Right.
And whether that's his responsibility to replace that in order for his project to go forward. Or if there is some common way for the town and the applicant to work together to, you know, make those improvements perhaps over time or come up with some, some way that the applicant doesn't have to do that full project before he can advance to his manufacturing process.
It is the, the stand, I guess, of, of our board, of our, our department, our superintendent, that the. the water infrastructure in that area is old, it's fragile. At some, at a point years ago, it supported a furniture factory. Furniture doesn't require, making furniture doesn't require large uses of water. But, we, we're, our concern now is we, we, we don't really know what they plan on doing in there. Will they be using more water, will they be using less, what, you know, what are they going to, what kind of process is gonna be there? It's also a concern that if there were to be a large-scale incident in there, and the sprinkler systems were to engage, that could cause an, uh, an issue with the water system down there, it may not, I, we don't know, we, we don't, until you dig it up, you don't know what's under the ground, we don't have a whole lot of confidence in it. So, those findings were the findings that we had, that, uh, were confirmation of the concerns that we've had right along down there, so.
So, so it would be, just to be clear, so it would be your, your board's intention that we have that as a condition for the site plan?
Yes.
Vision for them to pay for it, D M A?
Um.
Pay for the town?
Yes, yes.
If they were willing to come to you and, and try to work out some agreement, because, I mean, like, we, we were just told tonight by the planner that this could be a six hundred thousand dollar cost. You know, if they don't have a business plan for this to be happening in a, in a twelve-month period, but they could do it over a thirty-six-month period, say, is, is this possible, or?
We, we, we're open to discussion. Yeah, we're always open, everybody's open to discussion.
All right, that's, that's what we wanted to.
We can talk it out, but, I mean, if they reach out to us, we can pull something together and. Talk, I, the best thing, the best thing is to talk face to face.
Right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're inviting them to the next meeting. Like I said, we continued the public hearing, we're inviting them to the next meeting, we'll invite your board to come along, if you wanna bring your engineer or your.
Yeah, send, send an invite over, and then we will get it into our schedules.
Yeah, I mean, if you have something worked out before that, great, if you don't, then maybe we can work it out.
And your next meeting is?
Two weeks from tonight, it'll be the twenty-eighth, so, okay? And we're gonna have it at, the, the, uh, public hearing is scheduled for seven forty-five, cause we already had a, another public hearing scheduled at seven fifteen, so we.
Oh, okay, that's even better.
We moved it up to seven forty-five.
Next meeting, yeah, yeah. Dinner is still sitting on the stove at home, so.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's see, where are we at here?
Comments from the audience, we got any others?
Any other comments from the audience?
I was just curious on the, the rail trail, the grant, paving it. I know that that particular rail trail, when it gets to, uh, it starts at Mill Street, and then it goes to, when it gets to West Dudley Road, where the old Paper Mill is, it kinda just abruptly stops there, cause there's an old railroad bridge that is a death trap, so people just kinda go off the trail and go through the, the low area there, and kinda have to work their way around, it's not gonna be a trail anymore at that point. I was wondering if, you know, whether or not that's part of the grant, is fixing the bridge, or figuring out something?
No, it wasn't included in the application.
So, it's still gonna be, it's gonna be paved, stopped at the bridge, and then you're gonna have to still go through the.
Maybe we could work something, something into it to make it a little safer to get to the road, but.
Yeah.
There is another point, if I may, that, that where that crosses, I, I think it's a Ramco Road, access to one of their facilities, as you're, not as far down as you are, but, you know, I don't know what the status of that would be, with the rail trail, with the paving continuing over what is now a dirt road used by them as a point of access, or is it just stopped and then pick up on the other side?
Well, it's a good point, cause they, that, those are pretty heavy trucks that they've got going across there, so you're able to see that damaging that.
Probably some signage and, um.
Or they could just cut out the paving and put some concrete down, and if the trucks break up the concrete, you just can easily re-pour that. Yeah.
Sounds like a good thing in any of it.
Yeah, we didn't do any engineering for this, we just said, okay, here's a rough cost.
And, and that would, that would be slated to start next year also?
No, this year, I think.
This year, actually.
We have to finish it up by June thirtieth of next year. So, the thought was to, to really get going out at this fall.
Okay, so do we have a paving company in contract and all this stuff?
Um, I think we might be able to use the town's paving contractor.
Okay, that would be good. Okay, so, uh, next meeting, as we just said, is June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, do we wanna set a meeting, summer meeting schedule? Typically, we, we take, we only do, what, one meeting in July and one meeting in August?
In the, uh, cover of your, uh, binder is the meeting schedule for this year, so we have meetings scheduled July twelfth and July twenty-sixth, and August ninth and August twenty-third. Uh, the last couple of years, we've met just once in July and August. Uh, things are not terribly busy right now, so, I mean, I think we can, we can meet once a month.
Anybody have any, any problem with that?
Always schedule it in.
Yeah, I mean, if there's an emergency that comes up, we could always schedule it back in if something's, you know, dire streets.
Just need like two days, right, twenty, forty-eight hours, schedule a meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion that will, um, cancel the meeting for July twenty-sixth and August twenty-third?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we cancel the meeting for July twenty-sixth and August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four votes and one extension. Okay, takes care of that. What else do we got left here? Yeah, approval of consultant vouchers and bill payments, so we have, looks like we have two, two vouchers. One is the three thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents going to Titan Bond, and the other one is a hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents for, uh, telegram announcements. Somebody like to make a motion that we, um.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve payment of the, uh, two vouchers, uh, bills, if you will, one for three thousand one hundred seventy-three thousand seventy-five cents, and the other for a hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, four ayes and one extension, and, uh, Bill, you can go ahead and write those out when you, when you get a chance.
This one gets, that gets paid, or sent, the bill gets sent to D M A Holding, right, that three thousand dollar one? Or is that a?
It's gonna cut.
Yes, they, uh, we had an estimate from Titan Bond of four thousand, they paid that four thousand before we began the review. So, we still have.
So, in their peer review account, they have four thousand dollars, yeah, so they, they're cut, they're.
So, if we wanted to invite the engineer to the meeting, he would be able to cover his time that way.
Okay. All right. Any other notices or correspondence?
I don't see Mr. Haynes in the audience, so I guess we should.
See, there's a magnet.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's eight o'clock, it's an hour after we started, so, I mean, I think we gave them enough time.
I'll invite them to the next meeting then.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Cause I think its covenant's gonna be expiring.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, oh, make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Four.